Before we begin our meeting, I have an appointment to make and I have a special tribute. Whereas Isabella Miller is a Perry High School senior who has attended Perry schools since the third grade and whereas Isabella takes her school grades very seriously and is currently enrolled in classes in the fifth year college program whereas Isabella Miller has been an honor roll student and currently serves as Vice President of the National Honor Society as well as captain of the varsity track team and competitor with the Michigan Indoor Track Series and whereas Isabella is proud that her four times 100 varsity relay team has competed at the state finals for the past three years and whereas Isabella Miller is a Perry Equestrian member and has been a top 10 rider in the district for the past three years and qualified with the team to compete at the state level for the past two years and whereas Isabella's extracurricular activities also include being a 4-H member who exhibits cattle, horses, and pigs plus being a volunteer with her club and whereas Isabella Miller says, "Being a good student, athlete, and citizen of Perry are among the most important things to me" and whereas Isabella plans to earn an associate's degree at LCC before transferring to a university to pursue her goal of becoming a physician's assistant. Now therefore be it resolved that I, James A. Hughlett, Mayor for the City of Perry, with pride in the student body and this outstanding student at my own alma mater, do this day a point, Isabella Miller, Student Mayor for the City of Perry, to serve in this capacity until April 4th, 2019. Furthermore, I invite Isabella to participate with myself in the Perry City Council in the activity of city government and I extend her privileges to speak to the issues that concern her generation at the meetings of the Perry City Council. I also invite her to participate in all ceremonial duties of the mayor. Further, I call upon the citizens of our greater Perry community to honor Isabella's accomplishment and character in being among our best students at Perry High School. This is the end. All of you, welcome.
I'm Chris.
Hi, I'm Isabella.
Isabella, nice to meet you.
Okay.
I was gonna let you know.
I just, I didn't know, right? I don't know, you know, guy.
So, oh, wood.
I'll take note that our scheduled invocation speaker this evening, Pastor John Waller from Perry Congregational Church, is not with us tonight and so as has been the practice for the last several months, I would extend an invitation to any member of the public who might wish to do so to extend an invitation or to do an invocation for council. Would anyone from the public like to give council an invocation? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Why don't you step up here?
You may.
Well, really, it doesn't matter. I just, uh, my name's Dave Cleese.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not public comment. We're doing an invocation. Will you give a public comment later? Would you like to give an invocation?
I'm up here at the beginning, so.
Ah.
Alright, sorry about that.
My apologies. Deanna.
Could everybody bother here, please? Father, we thank you for this evening that we can gather together here without being molested or bothered because we've gathered in your name tonight, Father. We thank you for the council members and the mayor and the police department, the city workers and everybody that puts so much effort into this city to make it nice for us. We give them honor tonight. Father, I ask that this meeting goes well tonight, that maybe we might not all agree on the subject, but you know what? We come together in unity because there's strength in unity, Father. We thank you for everything that's going to be done today neatly, orderly, and to glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pastor, thank you for your service. Sorry about the confusion. We will get to public comment real quick and we'll be happy to hear it. Okay. Isabella, now I'm going to have you handle meeting and the session and what you need is you tap the little button and you say, "Call and order this." We have a word in hand? Call and order this regular meeting of Perry City Council for March 7th, 2019.
Okay.
Is that all?
Okay.
Do you mind if I?
I call to order this regular city council meeting held on March 7th, 2019.
Thank you. See, you don't really do that anymore. I haven't had to do it. If everyone would please rise. And if you would join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Everyone make a statement. Are you okay, Chris?
Oh.
No, uh, there we go. Devin, would you please call?
Karen Davis. Here. Craig Elliott. Ann Grass.
Here.
Christopher Powell.
Here.
Michael Queen. Terry Wood.
Here.
Mayor James Hughlett.
Here.
All the county for except council members Craig Elliott and Michael Queen.
I find that the quorum is present and we may proceed with business. The first item on our agenda is the approval of that agenda. The clerk and I have prepared the agenda and believe it has all items of business that need to come before council for your attention tonight and I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Second. Moved by Davis, seconded by Grass, that the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. This takes us to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the previous meeting?
I move to, we suspend the rules, waive the reading and print the minutes of February 21st, 2019, regular council meeting.
Order.
We had two, so.
I did surprise.
Oh, okay. Terry.
Oh, did you do it too? You have it.
I'll share.
My voice is just that way. It's overbearing.
Okay. So, was moved by Grass, seconded by Davis, that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2019 regular council meeting as presented. Is there discussion on those minutes? I'm going to pause for just a moment so we have the quorum sealed. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries. We will now move to pre-prove reports and presentations of which we have none this evening. That will then take us to public comments. It is at this time during our meetings and also at the end, under any other business may come before council, that we open the floor up for members of the public to address the city council on any matter they may wish to do so on. We do have a three-minute time limit on each section of public comment. I have a gentleman here who has already spoken to me about his interest in addressing the council and so I'd like to invite you first to the podium. Welcome.
Me?
Yes, sir. Your turn. When you come and you ask, you have to go first.
Yes. Well, I'm, uh, my name's Dave Cleese. I live at 200 in South Washington and I have all my neighbors on board who would like to find out where you get that section of road blacked out because of the dust conditions and there's no gravel left in here. I've worked with John, I don't know what his last name is, from your DPW.
John Sowder.
Is he there? Hey, John. And, uh, we discussed it last year. I personally treated road myself four times, you know, and, uh, this is tremendous amount of dust and people for as short a stretch today as they drive, some people drive fast, other people drive in orderly fashions. But one of the problems that I saw was, was the wind, prevailing wind is out of the southwest and I'm on the, on the west side of the street. That dust goes across to Olive Branch and I saw a couple times with the elderly out there with their oxygen bottles on and stuff sitting in the gazebo and I couldn't see them because of the dust. And so I talked to Bob Davis. He's behind it 100% too because of the fact of the amount of money he's put into that facility this year, this last year, I mean, and, uh, it just looked bad. The amount of dust that's over getting on his property all the time, so. But I talked to all the neighbors and one of them came with me tonight, Jim Shively, sitting right behind me.
Welcome.
And, uh, Bob, and then there's another couple that, uh, lived just down the street and that's, uh, Harry and Janice Hamilton. They lived down right by Jim's house.
Okay.
So, I'd like to let you guys hash that out and let us know what can be done because there's really, as John can probably tell you, there's really not much gravel left there. It's probably sunk and it's, it's a very sandy area to begin with, so it's a lot of mud when it rains.
Okay.
And dusty. So, you guys can, uh, hash that out here and get back to us or you want me to keep coming.
Well, we would love to have you coming, but, but that wouldn't be a reason to handle it. Does John have your contact information?
I'll, I'll give it to him.
Okay. If you would do that and then I'll get some research done for the city council, let me give you my card.
Okay.
So that when you need to reach out to me, you can do so. And then we'll begin that conversation and talk with council about how these things are done.
Yeah. Do I have any time left?
Yes.
Another thing, you know, about, uh, I know there's an expense for the city, but if the city would keep up with their ordinances about keeping their sidewalks cleared, keeping cars parked off the sidewalks and the amount of cars that are parked in some people's yards, don't they have, I'll have to be licensed current? Those kind of things, you know, there's a lot of little things that seem to be neglected at times that, I don't know who's supposed to keep up with all this mess, but that's a source of revenue.
Chief Box would be happy to receive any report that you have at any time.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming.
And I'll, uh, I'll stay in touch. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council at this time on any matter?
We'd love Dave off our roads.
If you want that on the record, we need you to come to the podium and give your name.
Are you having dust problems and all or?
We got a lot, uh, but, um, I'm just, he said I was going to bring that off so long as he came to sit in.
It's the best way to do it so now we know.
Welcome here. Would anyone else from the public like to address the council at this time? Seeing no other public comment, we will move to communications. Devin, do you have any communications for the council tonight?
Yes. I received a resignation letter from Michael Queen. I, Michael Queen, am humbly resigning from the planning commission as of March 7th. Thank you for your opportunity and it's dated, signed by Mike 3719.
So that will open the seat up on our planning commission. If council members know anybody within, who lives within the city that might be interested in filling that seat, please send them my way. I'd be glad to talk to them.
He is going to continue the big pro town?
Yes.
To stand the council?
This is, this is just.
Okay.
This is just planning commission.
I thought the worst as soon as I heard you say his name, I'm, oh, happy.
He had to work tonight. In fact, I have two gentlemen here that are sharing their information with John that maybe didn't hear that we have an opening on the planning commission and any resident of the city, Dave, would be welcome to join the planning commission.
Okay.
Now we're going to get the road done.
If you want that road done, you know, uh.
Got a problem.
So, like if you're on the commission, you get a lot of results?
It's not a little.
We'll give you a chance to try.
Go ahead, Devin.
I'm kidding, of course.
Okay. I have to apologize. The mayor asked me to do this as correspondence, so I'm going to make sure he's okay with this. It's dead, it clings to another paper I had. This is the letter, the email that you received and you had asked to be at correspondence at the last meeting and it clung to it. So, do you want to read it or do you want me to?
I can go either way. Do you have any others?
I also, I also did this one that you asked, so do you want to do both of those and then I won't want to.
That's why I was looking for that.
Well, that one was from last meeting.
Okay.
So, do you want to read those?
I can do that.
Okay.
Do you have any others?
Yes, we'll be finished then.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other correspondence is, is we had two local churches that have come to the city and they are offering to do projects. We have put this on Facebook and on the city website. What we decided to do in-house, I asked Dory to work on a general form and this is what it says. "Help is available. If you know anyone, grandpa, grandma, mom, dad, or any relative or neighbor that needs assistance with a small project, raking leaves, shoveling sidewalks, yard or other small cleanup projects, mowing grass, cleaning gutters, planting flowers, small painting projects, handyman projects, or volunteer labor, assistance may be available to get these chores done. Note, some projects may not be possible until May. Volunteers are available to help those in need in the Perry Morris area. And then, please complete the following form and deliver it to Perry City Hall, 203 West Poly Street. We are open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. You can also email it or fax it. The bottom part is, please submit the following information if you know, know somebody that can use these services or if you are in need of these services. We are asking for your name, the address of the project, a contact number, and a description of the project. And what we will be doing is that you can drop these off at City Hall and then we will be forwarding them to the two organizations that are doing this. And if you want more information, we'll tell you the two. And they're going to review the items that are submitted and then try to get as many projects done that are requested. And that's all I have for correspondence."
Thank you. I have two items. One, I have a request from one of our former city clerks. She writes, "Dear Mayor and City Council, I am hoping that this letter can be read under correspondence at your next city council meeting. Although I am no longer a City of Perry resident, I lived there for 27 years and still care deeply about the city. That's why I feel that I must write this letter. While working with the city as city clerk, the council members and mayor made an important decision to purchase and restore the mitten factory and turn it into a remarkable city hall. This cost the city a considerable amount of money, but during my time at the city, I never heard one citizen complain. As a matter of fact, there was a lot of praise for the city. Now, I cannot understand why the city would want to destroy another historical landmark that they already own after spending so much to save the mitten factory. I hope that you will consider looking into some options to save the Queen House and make it something the city can be proud of as a historical landmark. I've heard that there are some citizens who would be willing to work with the city. Thank you for giving me the chance to have my say. Sincerely, Judy Gunther, a loyal City of Perry fan." I have another item here. I have communicated with the lady who wrote this, but I haven't received express permission to share her name, so I'm going to refrain from doing it. It is sufficient that she is a parent of a Perry school student. She wrote, "I am just wondering if the city would consider scheduling this hearing," now it's in reference to the hearing, the public hearing on retail marijuana scheduled for March 28th. I think I should tell you that beforehand. "Would consider scheduling this hearing on a different date. March 28th is actually spring break week for the Perry students, which means a lot of families will be on vacation and not able to attend. It is just a suggestion as I would also like to be able to attend this hearing myself." I have responded to her as follows. "I understand the reasons for your request, however, I am concerned that we have already gone too far in publishing this hearing to change the date now. In response to your concerns, which I absolutely take very seriously, I will plan to read your email as a communication to Perry City Council at our next meeting and discuss what we might do to address your concerns. I will be happy to speak with you after our meeting and I receive council's input this Thursday, March 7th. You may call me before or after that meeting. Just so you know," well, I'll leave this out. This is, I'm just telling her I'm a practicing CPA and very busy. If you leave me a message, I promise I'll listen to it and call you back. "I said you may communicate with me through the city clerk as well as directly, should that prove helpful. I have also included in this response Perry's mayor, Pro Tem, Mike Queen, because as my second-in-command, so to speak, I tried very hard to keep him in the loop. He has my trust. Thank you for your interest in the subject matter." That's all the communications I have today.
You wrote a nice letter. It's well-worded and, you know, so.
That's good.
Spacings are good. All right.
Well, that's good. This is an email. I think the computer did it.
Give yourself some credit. Come on.
So then we'll move to mayor and department head reports from here. Devin, do you have a report for the city council tonight?
Um, the only thing I have is I just want to make sure that council received the planning commission's recommendation from their public hearing last Monday. And other than that, city is going well and the communications are pretty much covered.
Chief Box, do you have a report for city council tonight?
Good evening. Uh, I wanted to let everyone know that our 2019 Ford Explorer is fully equipped and on the road and I promise that short of looking at the vehicle number down in the bottom corner, you're not going to tell the difference between that one or the other two. But it's out there and we're putting it to use. We are still looking to conduct the second of the two dates for the active violence incident response training. We had to reschedule the second date due to a critical incident that actually took place here in the county. So, that is coming up later this month, so that will take care of our county-wide annual training that we're going to have regarding that. And at the 911 board meeting today, it was announced that Chiwasi County 911 will now be able to receive 911 notifications and messages via text. So if anybody has an incident where they're not able to make the phone call, it's easier for them to text and then they can receive that text message and correspond with the person who texted them. So, I have a pamphlet that I'll hand out so you folks can have a little bit better understanding of what they are reporting to.
Thank you.
And I have extra that I'll put in the back as well, but that's a great feature that when we passed the ballot proposal a couple of years ago for Chiwasi County and added a monthly fee or an increase to the monthly fee for everyone's cell phone bills, this was built into it and we've been able to finally get the infrastructure put in place to make that happen. And aside from that, I don't have anything more. Does anyone have any questions? Very good. Thank you.
Our DPW superintendent, Mr. John Sowder, do you have a report for council tonight?
I don't have anything tonight.
You have some items under business that we'll have us with. Forward to that. I'll let council know that our city treasurer, Joanne Belting, is not feeling well for a while and is unable to join us tonight. We'll look forward to having her back and at that time we'll have an opportunity to discuss the second quarter budget comparisons and amendments. Budget comparison amendments can wait, so when we get to that under old business, I will seek council's permission to leave that on the agenda as an item with no action taken.
Okay. Do you remember what she said about that though?
Absolutely.
Sorry. That was the only thing. She did state that it is second quarter and the amendments she has recommended do not have to be done at this time and if you are happy with the original report, the report itself, you could approve just the budget comparison as itself without amendments. So, that is your choice or no action taken until she can be here.
I'll leave that to council's discretion.
Note that the motion has amendments and she told me this before.
I don't like no action taken.
When we get there, we'll have a chance to hear from you.
Let's go.
Well, we have my report first.
Okay.
All right. Well, let council know that the city staff, particularly the management staff and I are busy working on the budget now, getting ready for upcoming budget meetings. As many on council will remember, Adam, this will be new for you and it'll be new for Craig. Coming up within the next couple of months, I will call a series of special meetings. Typically, we get it done in two, although occasionally we have to go to three. And the city administrative staff and I will sit here in the city council chambers with the council present and in session. You guys are absolutely allowed to participate and we will put together the budget proposal for the next fiscal year, beginning on July 1st, that will ultimately be submitted to the council and has to be approved, either as presented or amended, by the council by your last meeting in May. So as we get closer to that, we'll identify some dates, make sure that we can have as many council members here as possible, and go through that budgeting process. I really, I think this will be our fourth year doing it and I've really liked the result of doing that. I think more than anything, it has allowed the council to get a better inside view of what's in the budget and how we get to those numbers and leaves you all better equipped to make decisions about it when we get to May. That meeting will be open to the public, so any member of the public, once we set those, wishes to be here and watch that budget process, will be welcome to do so. Uh, let's see. I would like to enter into discussion regarding our public hearing tonight when we get to any other business in regards to what we might do in response to the concerns expressed in the email I received, plus a couple of other things that I'm working on for that public hearing that I want to run by council, make sure you guys are in the loop as we go forward. Finally, I'd like to notify council that I have had contact with a couple of additional individuals in our community who are part of organizations that would qualify to participate in our invocation process. There is a new Pentecostal church out on Lansing Road, which is certainly qualified to participate. I have extended an invitation to the pastor of that church and she has expressed an interest in being a part of that. So I will, under the policy, write a letter and ask that she be sent that invitation and a copy of your policy and we will have a spot open in about a year, as we're scheduled about a year ahead. I've also had contact with the state chaplain for the Michigan State Gideons. It is my opinion that the Gideons are a qualified organization under your policy and so I am reaching out to them and extending an invitation to be a part of the invocation process as well and get into that rotation. That's all I have in particular to report on tonight unless council has questions for me on any matter. Hearing no questions, we will close our administrative reports and I'll ask council if you have any committee reports tonight. No committee reports tonight. Very good. We will move to presentation and approval of bills. Council has had the opportunity to review the bills and we seek your permission to pay them.
I move that we approve the bills as presented, that payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Davis, that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will move us to old business. At my request, council has kept mayor's appointments on the agenda with no action taken. I do not at this time have any appointments to make, however, I do have several positions that I would like to get filled. I have an open seat on the Chiwasi Area Transportation Agency Board. This is a position that is available to anybody in our Perry community. You do not have to be a citizen of the City of Perry to be a part of the governing board for our dialerite program here in town. If anyone's interested, please talk to me. I would love to put a second, good representative on that board. It's a good board. It's a good batch of people to work with and I, I think you'll find the work very interesting. And as everyone heard, I will have a open seat on the planning. And as everyone heard, I will have a open seat on the planning commission coming up. If any citizen of the city of Perry is interested in serving on the planning commission, please don't hesitate to talk with me. I like to have a wide variety of people from different backgrounds on the planning commission. I think a variety of perspectives is useful. So if you're interested, please let me know.
I have one more that came in today, but I don't have it in writing yet.
Yeah.
Local, um, the, um, local officers' compensation committee. Flora Parker called today and asked if she could resign. And so she's going to get something to follow on to it. So you'll have two seats now.
This would be a citizen of Perry for that board?
And you already had a vacancy, so there's two seats.
Okay. So we have a local officers' compensation committee. This is one of the easiest committees you could ever serve on if you're a citizen of the city of Perry. This board meets once every two years after the election and sets compensation recommendations for the city council and the mayor. And those recommendations come before council for their acceptance or their rejection. If accepted, then those recommendations go into effect in the next, after the next term or after the next election. This is a good board to serve on. Jean Holly needs it. She does a very good job. Usually it's a very quick meeting, a quick discussion. Once every two years, you can't get a lighter job than that. So I have two seats available if anybody's interested in serving on that. Be happy to talk with you and get you appointed on that board. I only have one condition. I expect you to say I get paid enough. As long as you say I get paid enough and don't need any more, we're on the same page.
Okay, James gets paid enough.
I would appoint you, but council members aren't allowed to be part of it. May I leave mayor's appointments on the agenda with no action taken? Okay. We have a consensus of councils. Next, under old business, we have the second quarter budget comparison amendments. What would council like to do in regards to this item? Chris, I'll recognize you first.
I see no motion taken till next meeting. Which is March what? There you go.
Anything else from council? Any other thoughts? May I leave this as no action taken?
Yep.
Very good. And that will move us to new business, possible approval of manhole rehabilitations. John, would you like to discuss this with the city council?
This is just one of the final manholes that we need to get redone due to some hydrogen sulfide gas damage that's out on Lansing Road. I had another, or another company was going to do it and they've had some personnel changes and issues. So I went with the company that we had been utilizing in the past and he said he would do it for the same price. So looking for, and this was approved in the budget that we're currently in to get done for approval of $4,000 to advanced rehabilitation for the manhole.
So I will open the floor up for discussion, questions, motions, whatever the council's pleasure is.
I'll put it in the table. I move that we accept the proposal to rehabilitate manholes, wet wells by advanced rehabilitation technology for the amount not to exceed $4,000.
Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Howard, that we accept the proposal to rehabilitate manholes, wet wells by advanced rehabilitation technology for an amount not to exceed $4,000. The floor is open for discussion on the motion. Did you want to say that louder, Terry?
No, no.
Don't make an enemy.
You kind of like the, kind of like the heaven streets in front of your house, Plow? Me too. Hearing no discussion, then is council ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. The motion carries. Next, we have possible approval to replace blinds. John, is this yours?
Yes.
Very good.
So Devin and I were talking and we had done, I don't know if anybody's been to the third floor. We approved maybe two months ago, January, I think we did it. Put the new blinds up there. We feel that there's enough money in the city hall general fund budget that was allocated to go ahead and fix those, replace the blinds on the second floor at this time. So I went and got quotes for the same exact blinds. You, the, the quote from Home Depot shows a, I think, 1852, but there's a 30% discount that they gave us. So the, the total cost would be $1,296.85 to do the rest of the second floor.
You'll see your motion is going to 18 only because we didn't have that in black and white. So to cover John, if there would be anything in between, your motion states what the vote says. So just leave John if they do that. Yes, because he's just going to make sure that it comes in.
Yeah, if they don't hold to their 30% off, then.
Okay.
I think those two can get together and cost us money.
Well, Terry, you could certainly do the motion. Eliminate the $1,296.85.
Yes, you can.
If you want to, if you want to control that, you can.
I move that we accept an authorized payment not to exceed $1,852.65 to Home Depot for purchase of vertical blinds.
It was moved by Grass and seconded by Davis that we accept an authorized payment not to exceed $1,296.85 to Home Depot for the purchase of vertical blinds. Is there any further discussion?
Correct to $1,852.65.
Okay. Well, I wrote the other number down before. So that was my fault. So the amount in the motion is $1,852.65.
Was this?
Go ahead, Chris.
Is this in, in the budget at all? Or was the money there available in one of the city funds for maintenance? And that kind of thing?
Yes. We've actually done exceptionally well on savings. And so as we're going to the future budget, we know there are a few items that we were going to go along. And to be proactive, we are trying to, with the savings that we've done this year, to get projects done. So that when we come to the table with you, we're not at, you know, we're not waiting to try to get it done again.
Yeah, I'm for it. Third floor looks great.
Further discussion?
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed.
We will now move down to discuss, to, a discussion to extend agreement with Granger Trash Refuge. Who has the report on this? Is this yours, John? You're still at the podium.
Yep.
We're here to hear.
So all, all the, we, we, we found out the increase is going to be 2.1%. It's not going to, I don't have to come to you with a resolution to increase trash cost. We have a new representative from Granger. He met with us several times. And they will extend the contract and keep our, everything will stay the same except they would like to go to carts, the Granger trash cans. And they would, at no charge to the residents or the city, deliver carts to every address that has current trash. That's what this is about.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When that trash can gets all banged up or broke up, do they bring another one or what?
They do. They, he said, he told us they have a 15-year life expectancy.
Oh, okay.
On the carts, so.
I had asked a question. I don't know if you had an opportunity to discuss it with them. If a resident wants to refuse their cart, will they be able to do so and still get their trash picked up?
Good question.
And I, I sent an email to him. I didn't print it off, but he sent it back. He said that they would prefer to drop a cart off to everyone. If people strenuously object, then that's so be it. That is life. You still have the same amount of trash. The six bags, I believe, is what, so there's nothing changed. It just, instead of having trash put out Sunday night and blowing all over the street, which I experienced last week on Monday, the residents will have carts that they don't have to buy, but, so.
Other questions for John?
When will those carts start to show up?
He told us that once they give them a go, we don't have an exact date, but it'll only take them two days. But I want to say he wanted a week because they were actually going to do, not expect the city, they were going to inform the residents by getting the information out to a flyer type of deal.
I would say you probably won't see the carts for a month because they're going to send out flyers. They, they have a Facebook page. I don't know all the ways that, and I think they piggyback on our Facebook or somehow.
We share. We share their newsletter information is what we do.
I think that would be great because the biggest problem is the doggone crows. So you can get in there and tear it apart.
They're 96 gallon, correct?
Correct.
Rear price standard of what we usually see around here, I think.
They're, they're, they're pretty, pretty good sized carts. I think he said they would hold pretty much the six bag limit that we have currently in place in our ordinance.
They don't, you just put the extra bag on top.
Right.
The only problem I have with that is the other day, how windy it's been, windy it has been. There, it's Thursday now and there's still trash cans out from Monday morning. You know, it's like beating at that dawn, but it's just, it's not, it's not attractive. And with the garbage bags, they're gone.
I'm just presenting it, you know.
I'm sorry.
Granger would like to do this.
It's a safety thing too, is what they said. These, these barrels are the type that are equipped with their new trucks to actually lift them in. Granger is a real sell on the safety end. And again, I understand what you're saying. I want to say the biggest complaint we get is people that utilize their, their own containers and they get broken and Granger's not responsible for that. Really wouldn't run into that anymore. But you are correct. They, you know, there's, they're not paying with pretty flowers.
Organically, it's the only way to go.
And that is, I agree with that. But, you know.
I think they're just bringing completely bringing containers.
It's just forgotten.
Well, they can drop one in my place.
Because that's being put in your flower garden.
I move that we approve the extension of the trash removal contract with Granger Container Services Inc. for a five-year period with a term ending in March 6, 2023.
It was moved by Grass, seconded by Davis, that we approve an extension of the trash removal contract with Granger Container Service Incorporated for a five-year period with the term ending in March 6, 2023. Is there a discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed.
And that will move us to our final item of new business, possible approval of proposal for council videotaping. This was in council packets last meeting. And council has had an opportunity to review the new proposal. So I'm going to open up the floor for discussion unless Devin has something she wants to say about this first. Devin, do you have anything you want to talk about first before we get into it?
I put a note in just so you know that the letter, your motion addresses all of the proposal in this letter. And if you have any questions on the note that I left you, I can write you. My opinion is the $10 fee for the DVD is not necessary if you decide to go with the upgrade of having the upload of the YouTube because then it would be available whenever you would want that taping. But that is your choice. Where we weren't paying for it now. And now we are. And I, since 2012, what they're asking when it comes to actually the fee increase to me is totally reasonable. It's just the other additions that I want to make sure that that's what you want.
Terry, I'll be able to show you how to get on your phone and watch yourself on YouTube.
Oh, no.
I'll be able to show all your friends, too.
I'm here now, so I don't want to look on it. Don't.
Floor is open up for discussion. What's council's pleasure on this?
It's.
That's it, I'll take care of it.
It's been a couple. Go get them, Jimmy. It's been a couple of years. They've been charging the same amount, is that what I remember?
It looks like about six years.
About six years. I, I, I'm absolutely fine with it. It'll kind of give us an incentive to knock it out in the first hour.
Do you want to include the YouTube and do you want to include the $10 charge to receive the DVD hard copy? Is the two other additions in your motion that you can accept or not?
I don't think we need to master the DVD. I don't know about the other. That's beyond me.
The YouTube is something, as in general, in council has talked off and on for years, to have our meetings available on our website. And we would, with this link, we would also be able to post the link to Facebook too. It's another transparency. The only thing I don't know, and maybe Alice can help us with, is I don't know what the turnaround time will be when that YouTube, because the uploading to YouTube is time consuming.
Yes.
And so, you know, I don't know if we would have that link in 24 hours or if it would be like the Monday taping. Have, have you heard how, what the plans are or not yet?
My dad knows what the plans are, so.
Sure knows.
Because he's the one that uploads it. So he will give you the.
The schedule.
The schedule, yes.
Okay. So Terry, that's the only thing that I don't have tonight on the scheduling of actually when that video available. But I would assume that Dennis would be on the same schedule as he is for the cable channel. So it will just be a few days off.
What is the DVD? Who gets it? Do they'll charge you $10 if you want one? I mean, like a citizen going, hey, I want a DVD of March 7.
They've always, they've always charged any resident that asks for a taping. They've always charged a DVD charge of $10. And with the $100 fee that you are currently being charged, that was part of the city's package. So Alice gave me one tonight from the last meeting. So I receive a hard DVD copy of each minute that I have available. But when any, anybody outside of council asks for it, there's a charge. And they're just adding it on. And it makes sense, once you have the YouTube.
You don't need the test, but.
Don't need the test. But she won, I would say, Mrs. Gra, or Mrs. Edward, sorry, wanted to make sure that she offered it. wanted to make sure that she offered it.
Just in case we still want it as a city record. But I agree, I don't think the DVD would be necessary at that point. I think this would go a long way to improving public access to our meetings right now. If you don't have cable, you can stay if you want. This way, if you don't have cable right now, it's a little harder to get access to our meetings. But if it's out on YouTube, then a broader range of people have easy access to it. And I think that's a positive thing.
The way I read this down here, whether a meeting is one hour or less, say it's an hour and fifteen minutes, then it'd be a two-hundred-dollar fee, is that correct?
Not two-hundred.
Hundred dollars for the first hour.
One hundred dollars, and then it's twenty-five dollars per hour after.
I didn't catch that up there.
And I was, and I did call Kathy today because I was, I figured that would be a plus. And basically, they're going to be reasonable if you're close to the hour. But once you do reach more like, you know, fifteen, half an hour, whatever, you are going to... But that's still a very recent, twenty-five dollars for additional hours.
Yeah.
Compared to what they've been since 2012 again, I think that's...
Well, it's a big jump from 2012, but it has been just a couple of days since then. I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't think we need the DVD down there myself. If you're going to YouTube, you know, that's my thoughts.
My thought.
You know, I'm not up on this topic.
Just consider that in your motion, because that's why I want to make you aware that everything's included.
I move that we accept and approve Studio 130's proposed filming of council meetings for an amount of hundred dollars, first hour, additional twenty-five per hour after, and fifty-dollar charge to upload the meeting to YouTube.
And so this is, the ten-dollar charge is just cut right out.
If that's what you all agree, that's how he...
He stopped there, okay.
Okay, it was moved by Grass, seconded by Wood, that we accept and approve Studio 130's proposal, filming of council meetings for an amount of a hundred dollars for the first hour and an additional twenty-five dollars per hour after, a fifty-dollar charge to upload the meeting to YouTube.
Any discussion? Add it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed.
Very good. So that concludes our new business. And we will move to any other business that may come before council. First, this is our second opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter. It is a new three-minute clock. So anyone who has spoken before gets an additional three minutes should they wish to address council again. Would anyone like to address the council on any matter at this time? Seeing no public comment, does council have any other items of business that need to come before you tonight before we get to the couple of matters that I set for you? But does council have anything? Then I would seek council's motion to accept Mr. Queen's resignation from the Planning Commission.
Move that we accept Mr. Queen's resignation from the Planning Commission.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Davis, that we accept Mr. Queen's resignation from the Planning Commission. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. And that takes us to discussions regarding the public hearing. So I'd like to talk a little bit about some of what I've been working on. I had made a decision regarding the public hearing that I think it would be beneficial to move it to the third floor. The reason I think this is, then seems to be, at least from the feedback I'm getting, a matter of great public interest. I also had an opportunity to speak with Charles Scoville as the school board president. And he has an interest in the school board having an opportunity to be heard on this matter. I'm sure the school board will let us know what they want to do. But it was my intention to extend an invitation to the Perry School Board, the Perry Township Board, the Morris Village Council, and to the Morris School Board, as well as our county commissioner, John Plowman, our state rep, Ben Frederick, and our state senator, Tom Barrett, and invite them to be here for that meeting, offer them seats at the table as we listen to what the public wants to tell us. And should they wish to have a quorum and special meeting, we would, I would tell them, we'd happily post that meeting so that they can be there and participate fully. That means we need some space for that. Plus, I have a sense that we may have quite a few members of the public who want to be heard on this. So I think it's a good idea to move it upstairs. Also, I wanted to let you know the invitations that I intend to extend. Last item on this is I would like to get council's input on whether or not we want the video process for this public hearing, if you think that would be useful or if that's unnecessary. I didn't want to make that decision since there's cost involved. I'd like to get council's input. And then we have the matter of the email we received from an individual who can't be here. I'd like to discuss what we might do to address that. Couple of items that come to mind is, perhaps this is only our first public hearing, perhaps we schedule a second one. Or perhaps we allow people to submit their comments in writing and then we could review those publicly at the end after everybody who's present speaks. Or I'll open it up for discussion on any ideas and thoughts council has. Mrs. Honder, welcome to participate if you have some suggestions or thoughts on this.
Have you sent those invites out to those organizations?
Not yet. I had intended to try to get that taken care of tomorrow.
Charles and I talked about it just the other day. And we feel that there will be quite a lot of interest. So you need a lot of space. I plan to be there.
Do you believe our third floor will be big enough?
It may not with that many people being invited. I don't know.
I don't know.
I know there's a lot of interest on it out there.
Yeah.
My suspicion is that it will be. But if it isn't, that may be a lesson indication that we need to do a second public hearing.
Then you might want the videotaping so we can make sure that people that didn't get heard on the first one could be heard on the second, maybe.
Or if you cannot make it, you can watch it on YouTube.
Will YouTube be available that quickly? Do you know, Alex? Now that they've approved that, how soon will the videos be available on YouTube?
I've already gotten a demo for them, so I know he knows how to do it. But available, I don't know.
And my dad knows all that stuff.
Perhaps he can let me know. I just, I don't want to put it on the spot. That's just about a month away. And I want to make sure if you guys are ready to go now, we approve it.
Yeah. Do you want me to let him know and then I'll just have him call you?
That would be fine, thank you. Is there a consensus on videotaping it or some different thoughts? I've heard two positive comments.
I say, I say record transparent. If they can't make it for the meeting, they can at least see what's going on and not try to hear it second and third hand. And I agree with you that there will be, I'm sure there's going to be more than just the one meeting. And like you said, with the interest, what do we do if it's thirty-four degrees in Downcourt and we can't fit everybody up there?
Well, we've got lots of room here in City Hall. I think we'll be able to accommodate them. There's a tremendous amount of space up there. That room holds over two-hundred and fifty people. We have room out in the hallway as well. But if we get overwhelmed, we'll work our way through it the best we can. And if we have to do a second public hearing, perhaps we talk with the school about using some school facilities. If there's that much interest and since the school board has some interest in this, I suspect that they might be willing to work with us to help make sure people get heard.
If it's videotaped, you know, if there's that much interest, we might want it to look back on also, I think. You know, if there's really that, we may want to look and see what is going on here. If we haven't got a tape, we can't do that. I think it was this.
My impression, and it's only an impression, and people will often surprise us, but I think the third floor will be sufficient to accommodate everybody.
And if not, we make an adjustment.
Agreed.
So we tape it?
Sounds like we have a consensus on that.
Do we go ahead with it on that date?
I think we should because we've already been publishing it. I've been talking with many people about it. There's an expectation to have one there. And I'm concerned that if we pull the plug on it in an effort to improve the date, we're just going to throw a lot of people for a loop. I don't think we're going to get the word effectively to all of them. We can always do more public hearings on other dates. And I think that's a more effective option than changing the date of this one.
I think if we're really crowded with a lot of people there, we have to take a look at a second one because, as you say, the school's interested. There's a lot of people interested in it. And there's a lot of families gone. So I think if there's a lot of interest in it, we throw a second one out, I think. That's just me.
You know, when, I want to say, when I first started here, you told me that there's nothing wrong with grabbing somebody else's ball and running with it. We're a small bedroom community. And I got to believe that there's somebody our size of a city that's already gone through this, you know, over the last couple of months. If they have any recordings, maybe it's, you know, it'd be like studying film. So we could handle it better than, you know, just... I know somebody's going to just fly out the handle. And that won't be me, but I will.
I wouldn't worry about you. Well, I think council has done, I think we've done a good job of setting the expectation. I think we are all correct in our agreement that our purpose is to be there to listen. And our goal is at the end of the public hearing, everybody walking away felt like they were listened to. And you guys have approved a set of rules for the conduct on that meeting that I think will be helpful to that. Our agreement that it's not going to be our opportunity to argue or deliberate, that we will be able to interact with the individuals who want to be heard, ask questions, as long as we're respectful and we're doing it to have a better understanding of what they're telling us. And I will very stringently enforce that. I don't think that you guys will have to. I think it'll turn it into a very productive meeting. And I very much like that council has agreed that we're going to have a seat at the table so that each speaker gets to come up to the table and sit down with us rather than stand at a podium and feel like they're set apart. I think this gives us a good opportunity. I don't know if I've told you this yet, but I also plan to set a sign-up sheet in the back of the room. And that sign-up sheet, I'll ask for the name that they want to be called by so that I, they'll know it's their turn to come up. That will allow people who arrive early to sign up a little bit sooner. I'll ask for a name and I'll ask for where they're from. And I only looking for that in broad strokes. I'm from Perry, I'm from Morris, I'm from Owasso, I'm from Lansing. Just so we have a sense. Because I think it's important in our consideration that we know where folks are coming from and have a sense of who's from our community and who's coming in from other communities. I think it's just useful to know that as we evaluate everything we're going to get. So I'll set that up. And in fact, I have already received one advanced request. Mr. Webworth would like to address us at the public hearing. And so, since he asked first, I will write him on that list, which means if anybody else from the public asks in advance, I'll write them next on the list. And that'll give an example for people coming in to see what we're asking for. Because I don't want anybody to feel like I'm saying, I want you to write your address down so I can come find you. That's not what we're doing.
Right, right.
We're just getting enough to understand. So I would plan to do that as well. And as that's coming on, we'll start to get a sense of how many people want to be heard. So those are, that's kind of where I'm at on this.
You could go first name and last initial only. I wouldn't go with full name and I wouldn't go with the address myself.
No, I don't want addresses, just where they're from, just so we know.
Just so we know if they're in the city or out of the city.
Perry, Owasso, anything like that.
Go like, home, right on.
And I'm certainly not going to be picky. I'm not going to sit there. If I get one that says it's from T. Wood, I'll call T. Wood. You just need to know that that's your turn to talk.
T. Wood.
I'd go Terry W.
Then I would call Terry W.
And they don't have the last name. You don't see me up there.
T. W. is what the kids call you.
It sounds like council's on the same page with what I'm thinking. So Alex, could you communicate with your dad and Kathy that for 7:00 PM on March 28th, we'll be looking to have the camera here for the public hearing? Thank you. Any other thoughts from council as we work on the structure of this? Devin?
Did you, you haven't officially called a special meeting, have you?
I haven't. I'm going to wait until the 21st. And if we have the whole council here, then I will call a special meeting that night. And we won't have to serve council at their homes. However, if we're missing anybody on the 21st, then we'll just all have to get served at our houses if special meetings got called.
And the last question, it's the understanding that no podium because you're really welcoming the table, correct? Or do you want...
Yes, I don't want to have the podium up there. I want to make this an easy process. And I think an easier process is sit down at the table with us just like we do here, have an opportunity to be heard. One other thing, and I've heard some discussion on this and I'm open to council input, but I did see a clip, a recorded clip from a Lansing city council meeting in which the council president erred. And she erred badly by restricting a young lady who was under the age of eighteen from addressing them during one of their public hearing. In my opinion, that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I think any attorney of incompetence would agree with me on that. And so it would be my intention that I'm not going to make inquiries about age either. If kids from our school want to come and be heard on this, I think we listen to them, give them their chance to be heard as well. So I didn't intend to make any inquiries on what the age of a person speaking is, what we would hear from everybody who wants to be heard from.
Is this, I just refreshed my memory. Is this marijuana recreational, whatever, is that eighteen on it? I believe it is.
Twenty-one.
I believe Chris is correct. I believe you will have to be twenty-one to use it.
And you're going to hear from...
I don't hear him. I don't hear him, the seventeen-year-old kid. Unless his mom and dad are standing next to him.
They can't use it technically.
I'll get an opinion from the city attorney and I'll see if he agrees with me. I'm meeting with him tomorrow. I think what we're going to find is that under the Open Meetings Act, we have no right to say you can't be heard because you're not eighteen. But I will talk to the city attorney and I'll make sure we know the law first. And we'll have an opportunity to discuss it again before the public hearing.
Being the old guy I am, I would like to be able to differentiate between the under eighteen and the over eighteen myself. I can't look at these young kids anymore. Good Lord, I look at some that are thirteen that look like eighteen. I look at some that are twenty-five. You can't gauge these, I can't anymore, I'm too old. But, I mean, if I'm getting mostly young kids up there, I want to know that, is that their opinion, not the legal opinion? I mean, if you follow me, that's a little difficult to say. The people that can legally use.
Yeah.
Okay?
What if they're, what if it influences their life and they want to just support one way or the other, for or against it?
I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like...
But because they're underage, you don't want to hear it?
Well, I'd want to hear it, but I'd want to know, you know.
Terry, I wouldn't restrict you if you wanted to make it your standard practice to ask a question like, as long as you're consistent about it, ask, would you mind telling us how old you are? Give them the option to do that. I think often we're going to be able to tell when somebody's close to that, under eighteen or more into their twenties. But it's certainly a politely asked question to gather information. Wouldn't go amiss.
What's your opinion, young lady, on this? Am I out of left field? What's your opinion, young lady, on this, am I out of left field, or?
What do you think? Um, I think that, I mean, if they're, it obviously is gonna affect maybe their parents or their siblings, so I don't see why they shouldn't be able to have just as much of a say as somebody who is at the legal age to use it. I mean, they're gonna be affected too, why shouldn't they be able to say what they think? And not, and not be differentiated against?
Let me, let me think this out. Obviously, if they're talking about their parent using it, then obviously, we're gonna know their kid. Maybe, maybe I just need to.
Maybe they won't mention that, but they will, they will just state that they don't agree with, with it. And, and that's kind of, I wanted you to see the other idea, because I kind of was going in your head on, on your thought of it. If, if you can't use it, you don't have a say, but how do you know if they're not seeing the real world, it would give you a positive opinion of what they see?
If we're discussing beer, we aren't gonna have the eighteens in here, are we? Or the nineteen's, twenty's, or whatever, I, I, you know.
The issue is, I think, with James is very enough, is that you can't legally restrict them.
No, I, maybe not, but maybe.
And so, let me get the opinion from the city attorney, we'll have another opportunity to discuss this. I'm, I'm very confident in my opinion that President Spitzley erred badly when she did that meeting, and that was everything I read, but I'm not aware, let me find out. It may be that this whole conversation is moot, I think it is, because I think what we're gonna find is that we can't put a restriction on in regard to age. If I'm wrong, I'll be able to communicate that to you guys, or probably communicate it just in a broadcast email to everybody, but, and then at the next meeting, so that we know what the law is, because we'll have to begin with what the law allows us to do. And if the law says.
Like what you said, you know, because I, I was the other way, I didn't want to really talk to the minors, I don't, because I believe that, and it sounds terrible that the adults would have something more to say. And when I was not the adult, that's how I thought. And so, we want the young people that are seventeen and gonna turn eighteen, we want them out and get involved, and for us to want our, our, the youth to get involved in the government, tell them you can't participate is kind of a, a kick in the face. And so, I like exactly what you said about that.
I don't think they can get up there and state about their use of it, I wouldn't think. I, I, at least I, I wouldn't, you know? I'm sixteen or seventeen.
I wouldn't, but I'm not gonna try to restrict what they want to say. As long as everybody's behaving respectfully, I want to listen to what they have to say. Whatever it is, whether I think it's a good, good idea to say that.
I think you did it from the attorney, because he's the one that would defend us.
And so, I'll get that information. I want to tell you, Isabella, that you're not required to be there, but you will still be student mayor at that date. And should you choose to be there, you're entitled to a seat at the table with us, and you may take it. You may choose to sit in the audience and participate as, as a member of the public, or you may choose not to come, that may be a long night, but that's up to you. But as long as you're student mayor for me, you get a seat at the table.
I think we're saying that if there's fellow students might interpret it one way or the other, then you might. You're welcome to do whatever you want.
You can even keep that ink pen. Take it, take it with you.
Other, other items on this, any other discussion, thoughts? Mrs. Hahn, feel free to share all of this with Mr. Scoville, and he can look for my letter soon. And I would love to see as many members of the Perry School Board as wish to come, and we'll have a seat at the table for you. Any other items of business that need to come up tonight before we finish? Seeing no other items of business for council action, we will move to council discussions and observations. Mrs. Hahn?
Excuse me. Our main focus at the school board right now is working on finding out what people want in the new superintendent. Mr. Foster is going to be retiring, and we are currently accepting applications for the new superintendent. Last week, we had three meetings with the Perry School Building's staff to let us know what they thought was important in the new superintendent. Those meetings all went very well, and we got a lot of information. On the twentieth of March, we plan to review resumes. We have a committee from the board that will be reviewing resumes. And on the eighth of April, we'll be interviewing candidates. The candidates will be interviewed in an open meeting, since the whole board will need their presence. However, members of the audience will not be able to question the candidate or to make comments or anything of that nature, they're just there to watch. The board will be, we hope, having a new superintendent in early May, so that Mr. Foster can spend some time with that person, be getting them up to speed. He says he'll be available at any time for help, so we're hoping things go smoothly.
Thank you.
And if any of, any of you have comments about what you think we need to have a new superintendent, please hand back to board member and let them know what your ideas are. That goes for students also.
Thank you. That reminds me of something that John Harris said when he was school board president. He announced that it was a rather difficult meeting when a lot of people were there to talk. And he said, and I may not get the quote exactly, but he said, when this, that, when this is a public meeting of the Perry School Board, that means that it is a meeting of the Perry School Board in view of the public. It does not mean that it is a meeting of the school board with the public. And he promised to strictly enforce the public comment rules to the time set up on the board agenda. That's consistent with what he said, and I, I think he had it right under the law there.
Yes, I believe he did.
Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. Mr. Grass? Your comment? Mr. Powell?
Great job, and just, I'm real glad to see you back. I hope you're better, if you need anything, just holler. And that's it for me.
Mrs. Davis, I'm glad you're back too. Did you have anything else you wanted to say tonight?
No, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
It's really good to see you. It's nice to have you.
Thank you.
That's all, I guess.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure to have you here. You've done a great job. We can get you for at least one more meeting, maybe two, if you decide to come to the public hearing. I guess I will share also, when the parents are here, who would be great people to have a conversation with on what might be the best course to do. But just so you know, if you decided to come and it runs really late, you're not compelled to stay to the end. You can go, I gotta go, got school tomorrow, and you can exit at any time you want. I'm glad you're here. And our student mayor gets the last word. Anything you'd like to say?
Uh, it's been fun. That's all.
Thank you. Feel free to bang it hard, that one will ring. But I have one more thing to give you, adjourns. I need agenda items for the next meeting. So we will have mayor's appointments, second quarter budget comparisons, and amendments. We took care of that, we took care of that, we took care of that. That's all I have at this time. Does council have any other items that need to come up? Let's put discussion regarding the public hearing in there, under new business, so we remember to go over these things we've talked about tonight. Any other items for the next agendas? Should anything come to your attention between now and our meeting on the twenty-first, please communicate with the clerk, and we will make sure that all appropriate items of business are on your agenda for your consideration. With that, you may adjourn the meeting, you tap the gavel once, and tell us what time you may adjourn.
We adjourn at eight seventeen.